Good evening. My name is Paul Mendez and I would like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission meeting to order. I would like to welcome all those in attendance this evening and ask you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Rosa Torres.
Present.
Mitchell Moffett.
Present.
Paul Mendez.
Present.
Kim Laramine.
Present.
Abel Campos, excused. Dana Crutchfield.
Present.
Rachel Teal.
Present.
Jay Handler.
Present.
Jerry Cochran, excused. Mr. Chair, there are seven members present. We do have a quorum.
Thank you so much. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up volunteers appointed to the City Council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to the City Council regarding changes to the City Comprehensive Plan, lands use updates, block grants, allocations, and zoning codes. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I would like to remind those in the audience tonight, proceedings are being broadcast on the City of Pasco Facebook page and on Charter Cable, PSC Channel 191, and will be rebroadcast several times during the next month. This meeting is also being recorded, as you can watch it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. Click on the video on demand link and make your selections there. There are copies of the meeting agenda available on the back table, so you may follow along with the meeting. At this time, I would like to ask you to silence your cellphones to prevent interruptions during our meeting. For those present in this meeting, when you're given the opportunity to address the commission, please come to the podium, speak clearly into the microphone, and state your name and city address for the record. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I would like to remind the audience and the Planning Commission that Washington State law requires public meetings like this one being held this evening not only be fair, but also appear to be fair. In addition, Washington State law prohibits Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which the members may have a direct interest or may be either benefit or harm by the Planning Commission's decision. An objection to any Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time, or it will be waived. First, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show that there were no declarations. Second, is there anyone in the audience that would object to any Planning Commission members hearing any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show that there were no objections. We, the Planning Commission, need and value your input. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly and to make better recommendations to the City Council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at the Planning Commission meeting is your only opportunity to get your facts and opinions placed on the official record to the City Council, the City Council will use to make its decisions. I encourage you to take full advantage of this opportunity. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. I see there are no meeting minutes to approve. Next item after that is the old business, and there are none. So I guess we'll get right into the public hearing, which is the Code Amendments, 2022 Planning Comprehensive Plan Amendments. Staff, will you please get started?
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission and those in the audience. This is a special public hearing to consider the docket for the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Amendments. This has been a total of 16 applications that were proposed for the 2022 year cycle. It's a process that is allowed to happen only once per year, as dictated by state law via the Growth Management Act. And so, staff, because there are 16 applications, we want to sort of summarize kind of how the process would go tonight, and hopefully make this a more efficient and easy process for folks in attendance today. So with there being 16 items, staff proposes to introduce and summarize each proposal as we've done in the past, and then the Planning Commission can deliberate amongst themselves and ask any questions of staff. And then there will be an opportunity to ask if the applicant or the proponent of the application is the audience, an opportunity for them to come to the podium and ask or share their perspective of the application, and then an opportunity to open up the public hearing, close the public hearing, and then deliberate and render a decision. I do want to make one clarification that under each application, there are three options. The staff report did cut some of those short, but there are three options for three motions. You can only pick one tonight, and that is either to approve the proposal, deny the proposal, or modify the proposal. And if you choose to modify any proposal, then staff would ask that you identify any criteria or specific components that you are identifying that that proposal be modified against. So with that said, we have a list of 16 items, and we'll try to run through these as smooth as we can. So the first one is Comprehensive Plan Amendment, CPA 2022-001. This is a proposal located northwest of the Burns and Broadmoor intersection of approximately just under four acres, and the proposal is to amend the land use from a medium-density residential to a mixed residential and commercial land use. This proposal originally arrived to the Planning Commission during the end of the major update of the 2020 Comprehensive Plan, and at that time, the applicant withdrew their proposal so that the city's major update could proceed and move forward. They have since requested that this application be reconsidered. Early on in their application, they did ask that the land use that they intended to modify be modified to a mixed residential and commercial land use, and this will be a theme throughout much of the applications this evening, is that the mixed residential commercial land use is our most diverse land use. It allows R1, R2, R3, and R4 residential zoning districts, so that would be anything from a detached single-family home to multifamily apartments, duplexes, triplexes, kind of everything within that spectrum. It also allows commercial development as well, so it's pretty wide. Also, for all applications, this is just the land use. Most of these will require a rezon to be compliant with the land use, which will require a separate public hearing process through our hearing examiner. So there's multiple steps in this long process. There's significant growth expected and anticipated in the surrounding vicinity of this project. There's multifamily being currently in development review just to the west of this site with low-density development planned northwest of the site, and of course, Broadmoor master plan, which is a part of tonight's agenda, is just to the south of this site. Staff concurs with the application and believes that is in conformance with the intent of the Comprehensive Plan, and that ends this presentation on this application.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gonzalez. Planning Commission members, do you have any questions of staff? If there are no questions, the Planning Commission will invite the applicant, if attending to the podium.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Rick Simon of RPS, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Providence, AC, and FISL, who are the applicants for this proposal.
What is your city of residence, please, for the record?
I'm sorry for the record. West Bridle.
Thank you so much.
So the Kidwells have submitted this application with the intent that they would build a fuel station convenience store on a portion of this site. And so, we are in agreement with staff's recommendation for approval, so I'm going to keep my comments short, but I just have a couple points that I wanted to make. One, that this site is at the location of two arterial streets, Broadmoor and Burns, so it has great visibility and is accessible for neighborhood commercial services. As Mr. Gonzalez indicated, there is significant residential development proposed and in the works, both along Broadmoor and Burns, making this an ideal location for neighborhood commercial services, and approval of this application will implement several important Comprehensive Plan policies. And finally, I'd like to point out that previously, there were quite a few letters that were submitted on behalf of this application. The great majority of those were in support, and so I'd like to encourage the commission to approve and approve the proposed Comprehensive Plan and recommend its approval to council. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. The next step in the process is to open this proposal for public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against the proposed amendment? Going once, going twice, going three times? The public hearing is closed on this matter? Planning Commission members, do you have any additional comments or questions of staff before we vote on this?
I have a comment. I have a comment. I've read some of the letters in support of this, but I have concern also. There have been some submitted in opposition. My concern is the way this is outlined in the drawing, it goes north, part of it on Burns, so it directly involves the property across the street, which is established residential, low-density. I would think it could create a potential adverse effect, commercial traffic, lighting, signage. I would think that you have all commercial south of Burns already. That's already zoned for that. So what would be the reason to want commercial on this particular part, running right across the street from established residential? Just have a concern with that, and there are letters that support that view as well.
Yeah, I apologize. I'll make sure to do this for the applications as well, including this, that we did receive letters, both in support and opposition of this proposal, so my apologies for that oversight. Generally, the Comprehensive Plan supports a variety of uses within close proximity to each other, so this is locating residential uses next to commercial uses to close that gap of travel potentially, or just offering more opportunities for neighborhood commercial services. As the application states, this is a proposed amendment to mix residential and commercial, so the end development could still be, it could be 100% residential, it could be 100% commercial, or it could be 50/50, or 70/30. That's still to be determined. That rezon will still be a public hearing that's required. Rezones require public notice, so neighborhoods within a certain vicinity would receive notice of application about a potential land use action. But generally, the Comprehensive Plan does support locating a variety of uses to an extent within closer proximity to each other. I think, I don't know if that satisfies the question, but generally, that's what the Comprehensive Plan supports with the land use element.
Thank you. Yes, it does.
And if I could add that, because this will come up for the other applications as well, is that during each project's environmental review, they will be required to submit an environmental checklist in which staff will have an opportunity, along with other agencies, to provide potential mitigation measures if identified that would address certain things like traffic, lights, noise, et cetera, if there is a potential for an adverse impact.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Teal. I had a question. I'm trying to recall back to the transportation plan. Does the Broadmoor and transportation plan show what that intersection is expected to look like in the future? I know right now, there's a stop sign on the east-west side, but not going north-south. Do you recall what that is supposed to be based on the plan?
Yeah, the intent is for there to be a controlled intersection along with significant amount of improvements associated with development on that intersection and that entire corridor.
Okay, and would that be at later phases, or would that be closer, like with the funding we're looking at sooner?
The Broadmoor corridor would be a part of the adopted tax increment finance project that the city adopted earlier this fall, and that was presented to the Planning Commission in November. So Broadmoor, I think up to Burns Road, will definitely see immediate infrastructure improvements in the very near term, and then the rest of that would happen at the time of development.
Okay, thank you. I was trying to remember if that tax increment went all the way up to Burns, so thank you for that.
Any other Commission members have any questions or comments before we take the final vote? Hearing none, I need some Commission to make a motion, and we have three options before us: motion for approval, motion for denial, or motion for modification, as Mr. Gonzalez stated.
This is Commissioner Laramine.
Yes, Commissioner.
I move that the Planning Commission concur with the findings of approval criteria and additional factors for consideration for CPA 2022-003, containing the staff report recommended to the Pasco City Council, and approval of the request.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved by Commissioner Laramine and second it.
Chair, if I may step in, I just want to make a clarity that the motion is for CPA 2022-001. 003 is coming up very soon, so I just want to make that clarification. We've got to be really careful here. Thank you.
Yes, excuse me. I'm sorry about that. I can restate it, or whatever you have.
Thank you so much for the clarification. The motion has been moved and second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Let the record show that the motion passed unanimously. Apologies, one dissension. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to, I guess, the next step. Staff on this one?
Yep, so following all of the motions for tonight's items, we'll ask the Planning Commission to make one final motion to approve the motions as a docket, and then those will be forwarded to the Pasco City Council for a final decision.
Thank you so much. Will you please walk us through the next one, please?
Yes, so this is for Amendment 2022-002. This is a future land use amendment from a low-density residential to a mixed residential-commercial. It's located northwest of the West Argent and Road 68 corridor, approximately 2.2 acres. And as stated in the staff report, similar to the prior application, the mixed residential and commercial land use offers the most flexibility for the property owner and the end user, a mix of residential uses and commercial, or both individually. Staff believes that the application aligns with the goals and policies of the Comprehensive Plan. This site itself has remained vacant for quite some time, and staff concurs with the application and its intent in alignment with the Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you so much for the comments. If present, I would like to invite the, before we do that, are there any questions, any Commission members have any questions from staff or comments at this point? Hearing none, we're going to invite the applicant, if attending, to the podium to speak on its behalf. It does not appear that the applicant is present. Next step, we're going to open the public hearing for public comment. Is there anybody tonight's meeting that would like to speak on behalf or against the amendment? Going once, going twice, going three times? The public hearing on this matter, this application is closed. Planning Commission members, do you have any additional comments on the final discussion on this amendment?
This is Commissioner Laramine.
Yes, Commissioner.
I have a question. When I look at Argent Road and Road 68 and drive past there almost daily, I already see construction happening around that area. Maybe if Mr. Gonzalez can kind of share out about that. Appreciate it.
Yeah, so the intersection of Road 68 and West Argent, there are projects associated with the city's capital improvement program and the six-year transportation improvement plan, along with projects identified for intersection and safety improvements associated with the transportation system master plan. And so, as we begin to see development in that immediate vicinity, those applications and projects would be subject to mitigating or providing a proportionate contribution to the completion of those projects, based on the trips generated and the proportionate share that they would be generating. Regarding pending development, I think there is a pending development on the northeast side of Road 68 and Argent for a multifamily project, and then on the southeastern quadrant of the 68 and Argent corridor, there was a hearing examiner approval of a zero-lot line duplex development within the recent several months. So those projects, as they're evaluated, and any future projects in the vicinity would also have to be held up to that environmental checklist, looking at transportation, noise, et cetera, to make sure that they're appropriately mitigating the impact of their project.
Thank you.
Commission members, do you have any additional questions before we take a vote? Hearing no additional discussions on this matter, I would like to receive a motion.
I move that the Planning Commission concur with the findings of the approval criteria of additional factors for the consideration of CPA 2022-002, contained in the staff report, and recommend the Pasco City Council approve the request.
Commissioner Handler, right. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Let the record show that the application passed unanimously. Mr. Gonzalez, could you walk us through the next one, please?
Yes, this is an amendment for application CPA 2022-003. This is a proposal for a future land use amendment from the existing industrial land use to a mixed residential and commercial land use. Total site area is roughly 197 acres, south of A Street. This is located in between Oregon Avenue and South Road 40. This proposal is a little bit different than others. There's only two applications on the docket that require the development of an environmental impact statement, so that goes back to the mitigations that we've been referencing a few times. So the applicant received the determination of significance to develop an environmental impact statement. They have issued, we have issued a draft environmental impact statement, a final EIS has not yet been issued. Staff is still evaluating the contents and the proposed mitigations of that document. That being said, I will call out specifically that this proposal does have some other contexts that might be helpful for the Planning Commission, particularly that this would locate a potential significant amount of households in between a very active industrial part of the city. The Amazon warehouses are directly to the east. There is a pending project southeast of the site for roughly another 2 million or square feet. And then to the west is the local bounty, another industrial user facility that's going through the development process or construction process, and there is a recreational A Street soccer complex that will be located and constructed to the immediate west of this project as well. I'd actually like to ask Director Rick White to maybe provide a little bit of historic context regarding the industrial nature of the site and how council has historically perceived this part of the city.
Thank you, and I'll keep this brief, Commission members, but the industrial, well, it's called the heritage industrial area up until probably recently, has always been designated for industrial development. The city and the port have complemented each other by providing public infrastructure representing what's appropriate for industrial development, including a rail spur line, the oversized water and sewer lines, and not so much the city's part, but the port has contributed to much of this effort for outfitting this. The environmental impact statement, and you'll see this by looking at the staff report, there's a particular sensitivity to concentrating residential uses in this close proximity to industrial uses. Mr. Gonzalez mentioned about 4 million square feet of industrial warehouse space. Half of that's under construction right now. The other half is not yet, but is planned. It's the Tarragon development just to the south of the two Amazon warehouses. So the historical component of the industrial use of this property is probably pretty obvious. It's needed. The history of Amazon tells us that once those warehouses are complete and under operation, there will be springboarding other warehouse uses in the area around them, and that leads us to the staff conclusion that it's probably inappropriate to convert this much industrial land in such close proximity to identified industrial uses.
Thank you for the comments and the historical perspective. Very helpful. Commission members, do you have any additional questions?
I have a comment, question, kind of. Kind of in keeping with Rick White, I know this area finally became industrialized, industrial use that the city had planned for years, including the rail line development, the widening of A Street for the accommodation of industry. It's a unique area in Pasco. It generates a lot of tax dollar employment. It supports public agencies. I am very concerned that putting any kind of residential in the midst of an industrial area is bad. It exposes, I believe, potentially the residents to activity from the industry with trucks, hundreds of times per day traveling in that area. The barrier of A Street now kind of separates that land. Brochi, back in 2000, I believe, put housing north of this, and there's no question that housing is not needed, that it is needed, but I think this would be a poor idea. But I think this would be a poor idea.
If, if I may add, I just want to make sure to do the application justice. The applicant did provide a lengthy environmental impact statement with a vision for the area. As this, looking at the site itself in a vacuum, the, the large amount offers a really unique opportunity to do a variety of housing, commercial uses. So I think there's certainly some validity in the idea of adding different types of job and employers to the neighborhood and to the area, along with the, the much need for variety of types of housing. That being said, this doesn't live in an isolated area. This, this is a significant chunk of land wedged in between two freight-heavy industrial uses. And staff just wants to point out that while there certainly may be benefits to the proposal to increase private and public investment in all parts of Pasco, that we are cognizant and sensitive that the lingering effects of locating residential households in that proximity could be problematic and, and harmful.
Yeah, so I just want to confirm that, this is Commissioner Mop, by the way, I just want to confirm that. So what I'm hearing from you and what I'm seeing on this map is that this would be a finger of residential with all kinds of stuff around it, not only the industrial, but you got a softball park going in. So, but just to the east, you have residential to the southeast of that. Is that correct? Is that what I'm seeing?
Yeah, I mean, well, it'd be roughly two hundred acres of, of a site. Not all of that could be residential. The, the environmental impact statement had three alternatives. An alternative is always required of an EIS, a no action, which is leaving the site as is with the industrial land use. And the applicant proposed two different alternatives based on density and intensity. So one being a little bit higher threshold for density and one being a little bit more moderate. But so it roughly would be two hundred acres as indicated in the EIS, the draft EIS, of a mix of commercial area, residential housing types of various products, potential for open space recreational trail facilities, and also all the other things that would be necessary to accommodate that kind of growth. The applicant has expressed that, and the applicant is here in the audience, and I'll be an opportunity to speak with him later on. But directly to the east, yes, would be industrial, to the southeast would be industrial, to the south would be industrial lands. To the immediate west would be a combination of open space and recreation, the A Street Soccer Complex, and then the local bounty industrial project.
Understand, thank you. I'm glad the applicant is here. I'm looking forward to listening to you. I haven't made a decision yet. I'm still kind of up in the air with this. But as a retired law enforcement officer, it's been my experience that the closer you get to industrial areas, when, when you're bordering, you have higher crime rates. Now, I may be wrong in this area, but it's been my experience through years of law enforcement that it's just, it's not necessarily a massive change in, in crime rates, but usually there's just a slight increase near industrial areas. I could be wrong, as I say. So my concern, and I'm waiting to hear from the applicant, would be that if we put, if, if you decide to put industrial, residential in there, you're just adding a lot more boundaries of raising the crime rate just slightly, if not more than that. But that's, that's my concern, so I look forward to listening to the applicant.
Commissioner Hamon, do you have a question?
Yes. To, to me, this is a planning issue. Integrating housing in with the industrial. I've always been a believer in the fact that if you have people living in and around an area, with all due respect, they take care of it, they police it, and, and they watch out for crime, et cetera. So if it's, if it's planned right, I think it could be a nice, a nice development. But I, I too want to hear from the applicant on this as well.
Thank you so much for the comments. If there's no additional comments or questions from the commission members, at this time, we would like to invite the applicant, if attending, to step forward and speak to this proposal.
Well, thanks, commissioners. I'm Ralph Brochi. Live in Burbank, but I'm with Brochi Archutson, Brochi Family Trust. And like give us just a short vision of what we had for this, this land. Yeah, like in the early two thousands, we bought about eighty acres on the north side of A Street, on the end of A Street. It was totally vacant land and developed that into Tera Vida, which is now home for about two hundred and fifty single-family homes and a hundred and twenty apartments. We have a community center and our foundation, family trust offices are located there. Our vision for that piece of property was to develop safe community on the east side of Pasco. It was always an area that was kind of looked down on as far as people wanting to live there. We wanted to show that there could be a really nice, safe neighborhood for hardworking family, families to afford to live there and be proud of it. I think it's proven out to be just a, just a wonderful place to live. And yeah, everybody's invited to come out and visit the foundation there at the end of A Street, Leo Center, and take a look and see what's happening. So our, our vision for this property, it's about, it would be about a little over twice as big as Tera Vida now. And we would like to develop another community that's safe and affordable for working families. You know, most of the jobs now are being created on the east end of Pasco, but all the housing development's going out west. So the traffic's back and forth. And I think, yeah, I think we've learned from Tera Vida how to be good neighbors. We talked to Amazon when they bought that piece of property next to us. We, we were in contract to buy that property, so we ended up selling to Amazon. And they, they, they agreed to put up a sound barrier wall and, and and landscaping barrier between us because they, they knew that we would eventually try to build housing there, which they're excited about. They're going to need workers, labors that could live close, close by within walking distance. So I think, yeah, I'm not, I'm not a developer. I'm an apple farmer, but it's been a fun project and we don't, you know, we don't do it to make a profit. We don't leave the community, we stay there. There's, like I say, a community center, there's community projects for the people that are living in the, in the houses there. So we, we stay and we're involved. So I appreciate you supporting us on this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. If you would, I know I have a question. Is the majority of the development residential? Is that we proposing any commercial development in that area?
We plan on, yeah, it's could be mixed use, there'd be some commercial development along with it. You know, parks and, and trails, biking trails. So it's could be a yeah, multi-use, there'll be single-family homes, around, around four hundred single-family homes, some apartments, duplexes, triplexes. So, yeah, diverse community. And I think it's it's not going to be too much dissimilar from what's being planned at Osprey Point. So I think communities working together.
Thank you. I think the other commission members have questions. Appreciate you being here today.
Well, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
This is Commissioner Lerman, a question for Mr. Brochi.
Yes.
So is there a commercial aspect of the land that you want to develop?
Yeah, we, we have, there's about five acres set aside for commercial and retail development. We don't, you know, we didn't draft up a clear master plan on it yet, like exactly how it's going to be laid out. And potentially, you know, we may set aside location for elementary school if that's needed.
Okay, thank you. I think the, the development you guys have created is quite a gem in, in Pasco. And so I was trying to envision what you were sharing out, so thanks for helping answering that.
Commissioners, any other questions or from the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to open the the application for public comment. If anybody would like to speak on behalf or against the, the application, please step forward.
Good evening, my name is Stephen Baumann. I'm a resident of Pasco, also have my business in Pasco. And I speak with you from two hats tonight. One of them is, I'm working closely with Mr. Brochi on this project, as well as I'm also a landowner of four different parcels in this area. It's actually on this map. And wanted to, to share with you a few things. I think the staff, this has been a multi-year project. This was originally began working with staff prior to twenty twenty to the, to the comp plan. And they've put a lot of hard work in it and as well as we have. And look forward to this project. The intention is to build a master plan community, and that, that would happen closely with staff. And look forward to that process. A few things for consideration. We've worked closely and have had extensive outreach with the neighbors, trying to make sure that, that we have a understanding of their concerns. And I believe in, in your materials that you'll find that we have in the neighborhood of a hundred letters of support. And I think that that would, that would indicate that we have worked diligently with the neighbors, trying to, trying to understand their concerns. And there is certainly some people that, that feel that this isn't necessarily. I believe that there is three or four letters of, that people that are concerned that this is not a compatible use. I think if you'll look at the community that Mr. Brochi has built, both before the Tera Vida community out on the, the Apple Orchard and the farm, he built community there. And not only is he building housing, but he's also building community. And if you have the opportunity, I would encourage you to go and, and see that community. I've spent a lot of time there and, and find it nice, which is one of the reasons I bought land adjacent to the Tera Vida community myself and believe in this area. Some areas for consideration, as Mr. Brochi pointed out, a majority of the jobs are being created in eastern Pasco and a majority of the housing is being built in northwest Pasco. We believe this community would help relieve some of the traffic that that would generate the number of housing units here and the number of, of jobs that are being, being created in this area. We think that that is, that could be helpful for that. We've sat down with and, and talked with the school district and they, they have, because of the nature of building a school requires a larger land use area, they absolutely have interest in this as a potential site for school. If you'll look at, they have a bond before them and their intention is to develop a high school within a mile of this site and believe that there is a lot of compatibility with the school district. We have done a lot of work looking at traffic, how this area would, would develop. And the city and their master plan, we've looked at that, we've provided input in traffic studies at, to how to mitigate some of those concerns and believe that that can be, that can be, can be mitigated. We've sat down with and, and talked extensively with the developer of the Osprey Point, which is just across the railroad tracks from this, a very similar, similar use. We talked with them about, about ways to collaborate and be helpful with each other and feel like that we have a, a good partner and neighbor there. And the mixed-use ball fields that the city has already, has a contractor working on. We believe that some of the industrial use that is coming to the west of this property, we believe that there's a, a good way to buffer that and to mitigate for that concern that, that is potentially there.
Thank you so much for, for your comments. Like to give opportunity to others to speak on behalf.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Please step forward. Thank you so much.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Peter Harp, sir. I'm here for another matter, but I did want to address the fact that I live at a forty-four oh four Appaloosa Court. It's in the Road one hundred Broadmore Boulevard area of the city. And I'm consistently looking at the crime statistics that are available online. And generally speaking, from what I've seen historically, that area of Pasco is the safest, for lack of a better term. But when you take the statistics from the Broadmore Boulevard one hundred area and compare them to Tera Vida, the other community that they've done, Tera Vida actually has around a fifty percent lower crime rate than the Road one hundred Broadmore area. So it's worth mentioning that what they've done in the past, Commissioner Hamon, Commissioner Mop, to your point, you take the safest area of our city and then this pocket kind of over here that they developed, it's even lower than that by a considerable amount. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else that would like to speak?
Officer Ray, appreciate you, Pasco Police Department. And on that same note, I'm glad you brought that up. So I've been with, working with the Pasco Police Department for twenty years. Most of my twenty years, eighteen years of it, has been with East Pasco area, Tera Vida being within my, my area. I'm a community officer, so I work with not only residential, but community and businesses, anything in the East Pasco area. And I have to tell you, this, this is a model community. We talk about the stigma of the past of Pasco and they, as a community themselves, have changed that perspective. And not only statistically, which I, I apologize, I don't have that with me now, but I will tell you, he is correct. Statistically, the crime rate in that area is, is much lower than in other areas and in East Pasco in the past. Part of the reason for that, though, is because they are such a close-knit community that works very well with the police department and other businesses around them. I would obviously and most likely be working with them when they're working in this bigger community that they're planning on developing if it's approved by you. Excuse me. They do have other commercial things like the Leo Center, and they do have a school there, and they do have the Coliseum, they do have the rec center. They do have other things that many of the community members are involved in. And I think that's the key to keeping such a low crime rate area is keeping, keeping the community involved. They do a great, great job of doing that. And I appreciate that they're allowing me to speak on behalf of them because they, I couldn't imagine not being up here in support of them and everything they do. I do believe if this was approved, it's going to be an extension of the current development that they have now as far as the closeness and they're working with us. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Say your name and city of, for the record.
Justin Bearlocker. I'm with JEB Engineers. I live in Pasco, but my work office is in Kennewick. We were approached by the applicant in two thousand nineteen to help them with their vision of creating this new urbanism-style development within East Pasco. As the applicant has identified, things have changed a little bit over time. When we started, nothing has been going on. When we started, nothing has been going on in this area. And except for the residential and the community that they've created and they wanted to continue on the creation of that. So we have assisted the applicant, putting together the application packet. I don't know if you have, do they have that with them in their packet? So we've gone through a supplemental report with the application. It's gone through on how the project addresses the city council goals, the comprehensive goals and the approval criteria of this project. And I do have a handout that I wanted to provide. Is that something that we can provide and add to the packet?
Yeah, you have copies for the commission members?
Yes.
Okay, so what we'll have to do, commission, is let you receive those and we'll have to get them to the two online commissioners in some fashion.
Okay. So the, what we've provided was, staff provided their findings and we had also provided findings in our initial application. And so we've gone through their findings and also identified our response to the findings as well. And there's only, there's one item that I wanted to address with those.
And Commissioners Lerman and Teal, these will be scanned now and emailed to you.
So in addition to the application, we did do the environmental impact statement and worked with the city on getting that completed. And we've gotten comments back, we've addressed those comments and a draft of the, of the impact statement has been provided to the city. We're waiting for further discussion to finalize that at this point. One item I wanted to address is on page four, where it talks about the trips to the site, saying that 1,314 peak hour trips would be generated from the site. One clarification on that during our analysis of the traffic is that when the comprehensive plan was updated, we used the information, they used the information from the council governments on the TASs. The TAS in this area had no employment identified and traffic generated from the site. So during our traffic analysis, when we wanted to compare full build-out as industrial versus full build-out as a mixed-use, we had to make those assumptions of what it would be as a full build-out. So when you compare the two trip generations for the two uses, it comes out as a wash. So the, similar to what they've identified for the water and sewer, that the potential impact would be insignificant. There still would be improvements needed, but they'd be the same improvements that would be required if there is industrial development. The last item I wanted to address is the land use. And it's on, it's after page, page five, there's a map that we have prepared. And it kind of graphically shows you in red where the proposed site is. To the northwest is the green where the proposed park is that the city has identified. To the east, we have Amazon facilities. South of the Amazon is the Tarragon, which is more warehouse distribution. Immediately south of the red of the proposed site is property that's also owned by the applicant. This property is the only other property in the area that's identified as an I-2 medium industrial zone. And the applicant owns that and can control how that's going to be developed. To the west is the existing industrial development for Grove Bounty. That is in an I-1 zone. If you look in the zoning code, the purpose of an I-1 zone is to be a compatible land use with all uses and not to provide any impact to the air quality, noise quality and so forth. So in such, we've identified that most of the industrial uses can be mitigated as they've already worked with Amazon to mitigate the eastern property line with the sound wall and buffer. There's other mitigation options available.
Thank you so much for your comments. The map was very, very helpful.
Thank you.
Are there any other attendees that would like to speak on behalf or against the court amendment? Please step forward.
Hi, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Ryan Brought. I am a resident of Terra Vida here in Pasco and also a business owner in Pasco. My wife and I moved to Terra Vida in 2010 and we were inspired by the opportunity to be part of an intentional community that was more than just a group of houses. Since moving to Terra Vida, we have made lifelong friends with our neighbors and have experienced a sense of community that's beyond anything we've experienced in any of the other neighborhoods that we've lived in. Also, since moving to Terra Vida, we've adopted three children. We're in the process of adopting a fourth. And so this is the place that we have chosen to raise our family. And in fact, our children, their best friends, live right in the community. When we've, the idea of our kids asking if we'd move, ever think about moving away, they're like, no, we, our best, like, how often do you have your best friend live down the street? And I was like, yeah, that's pretty cool, isn't it? So the reality is that we also, in 2020, remodeled our home significantly to accommodate for the growth of our family, but also because we didn't want to leave the community that we're in. I completely understand the concerns of housing being located near an industrial area. But the reality is that across the street from where these trucks are traveling down A Street, are homes like mine and like my neighbors. And the environmental impact of additional industrial development happening right across the street is going to be a greater impact than if across the street there were more houses and more commercial development. There clearly is a need, nobody is going to refute the need for additional housing. And we've talked about where is that housing currently being built? Most of it is west, right? And what do those prices look like? So there's a need for affordable housing. There's no doubt in my mind that the stewardship and the care that will be given in the development of this community is going to be something that is a model for folks, you know, anywhere to really come and see and experience and learn from. So, you know, there are a number of families that have had the opportunity that we have to have this sense of community that we've lived in and understood in Terra Vida. But the fact is now that it's currently full, there's a need to expand and change the zoning to allow for further expansion. So thank you for your consideration. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Great comments.
So good afternoon, planning commissioners. Thank you so much for the time that you have given us so we can come here and bring you some of our opinions. My name is Gracie Vayzchimal. I live at 3702 Milagro Drive, which is a home inside the Terra Vida community. I wear many hats in the community, but today I'm going to wear the hat of a mom and a resident of Terra Vida, as well as the president of the homeowners association of that community. So when I found out that they wanted to build a phase two, I was super excited. So living in Terra Vida and talking to my friends about how awesome that neighborhood is and the reason why we moved there is for, to build the community intentionally. I was super excited when this other phase was going to be, come to be because in Terra Vida, we have, how, I'm going to echo the words of Officer Parisio and Mr. Brought, from a community garden to scouts in the rec center. They have the multipurpose room where we can hold meetings and we can convene. We have families with disabled children. They come together and unify. So as far as, and we also work a lot with the police department and have a neighborhood watch and we celebrate national light out. So just events that just bring community together. To me, that's like the best policing we have because everybody's watching out for each other's children. And so when I found out that the second phase was going to be built, to me, Terra Vida would be a model community and to see that in the sister of it, to be born and just down the street from us would be amazing because I do have lots of friends that want to move in, but obviously because we don't have that many housing in that area, I'm just pretty much telling them, get in line or get on the list because it is a place to be. And as far as community coming together and celebrating community, that's very unique. When we pretty much just have like neighborhood block party gatherings and so much so we can not only take care of each other's homes, but as well as our children, our pets. And so I would really encourage you, if you do have the time, to stop by and see what Terra Vida is all about. And just to take a tour of the beautiful Leo Center and go grab a treat at the Collegium Cafe and check out our community garden and our parks. And you'll see how awesome it is just to see people walking, greeting each other, getting to know each other's name. And it's kind of like the Cheers episode or even the Pasco Chamber where everybody gets to know your name. So I would really encourage you to stop by and to really support this plan because I feel we need more types of these communities in Pasco so we can continue to thrive. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Daryl Moore and I'm from Kennewick and I'm with JEB Engineers. Just wanted to give just a brief description of sort of the site's traffic circulation. There was the issue of traffic that we're all aware of. The draft environmental impact statement has a traffic study in it. At a planning level purpose, but it describes mitigation components of this project. But the map we provided in the red is the project and there's no planned connection, road connections to Amazon or Tarragon. It's going to be all internal within the red community area. So access points will be along A Street at probably matching to existing road intersections. Potentially, there could be a connection to South Elm. South Elm is being extended down or by Bounty in the city park. So there's not a connection point between Tarragon or Amazon back to this development. So trucks are not going to be entering this development from an industrial standpoint. It's completely separated. Obviously, there'll be trucks on A Street. A Street's a very busy truck route already. We're aware of that. Traffic studies can be looked at and more mitigation can be done to take care of those issues. If this is not turned into residential, more industrial will potentially come in and you're going to have more trucks on the road. Another thing about this, if you think about it, if all the housing is coming from the west, all the traffic drives into town to the employment centers. So all that traffic comes in, creates traffic issues. With this concept of this change would allow less traffic because you're closer to employment centers. So traffic is not leaving and going to the opposite end of town or across. So it's, just want to give a brief description of the traffic components of the project.
Thank you. Traffic concerns are certainly not priorities. Appreciate the time. If there's nobody else, I think we're going to get ready to close the public hearing on this matter. Going once, going twice, going three times, public hearings closed on this matter. Commissioners, do you have any final thoughts, comments?
Yes. I'm all for this project. I think the housing down there in this area would be absolutely a great thing to happen given Osprey Point, Sacagawea, I've ridden my bike down there many times. I watched the Eagles. What a great place for residential community. And from my perspective, I would really hate to see it continue to go industrial. And again, as I said earlier, I think this is a planning issue, a master planning issue, which they're going to have to produce a master plan and talk about roads and circulation and landscaping and bike paths and density. And I think it's a terrific opportunity to develop a really nice residential community next to the industrial park. But that can be handled with proper planning. And so I think it's a great opportunity.
Thank you so much. Anybody else?
I would like to say, I agree with Mr. Henzer. And after hearing a lot of you people speak about Terra Vida, I have some familiarity with that and it is a beautiful community. Mr. Brochi, his group has done marvelous with that. I still have concern about the traffic along A Street and that, I do. I also, we just received this this evening, so I really had a chance to look at the environmental. I understand it's just a draft, but I had not had an opportunity to look at that or really our packets were just provided this evening, so to review that in total. But thank you all for coming forward and talking to us about this, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else?
I also would like to thank everybody who testified today and got up and spoke thoroughly impressed. I don't know anything about Terra Vida, but I'll be there tomorrow. Check it out. But thank you all very much. You got me on your side.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Hi, one last comment. And yeah, I would thank you so much for coming tonight and giving us a bit more perspective on the area and kind of what your plans are. You know, I'm in favor for obviously developing housing in that area. I grew up very near there, so I'm very familiar with the area, I'm familiar with your community. And I thought it was a great investment that's already been made in that area. I would, I guess, hope that as you develop, you know, a further master plan, that you think about, you know, how do you support all of those people that live there already and that potentially could live there, you know, as far as retail and commercial and making it like a true community, right? Because I feel like as we look at, you know, potential opportunities like this, we don't want it to be, you know, like a standalone, right? Like you want to have the support for, you know, your retail grocery stores, you know, all the things that you need to have a thriving community. So I would just say, you know, as you think further along for your master plan and final plans, that you, you know, think about that too and think about incorporating it. Not just housing, but how do you support that community? So thank you for your time and appreciate all the hard work that's already been made.
Thank you. I do have a question for staff. Do you have any concerns about the development, residential development of the area or industrial? That do you believe the infrastructure is there to support either of those uses as planned or envisioned by the applicant?
The, you mean like the utilities in particular? Well, certainly there, I don't know, without knowing more about the planning efforts in more detail, it's hard to say for certain, but I would assume that if they can support industrial, they can support residential as well.
Thank you. If there are no other, no other comments, I think we're going to the chair.
I have one just quick question.
Yes, Commissioner.
Did the adjacent owner of the Bounty come? Did, uh, the adjacent owner of, uh, the Bounty company comment at all? I seem to recall. Uh, someone coming to the planning commission previously when this was brought up.
Uh, we'll we'll try to find that in the comments, Commissioner. My recollection is that. Uh, local bounty did express concerns about, uh, residential, uh, of the residential amendment to the comprehensive plan.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, just trying to remember both sides and I seem to recall that as well.
Just wanted to say, well, Mr., um. Well, staff is is, um, trying to do some research there that, uh, this is, as far as I'm concerned, this is exciting. I all. I spent some time also at the Lakeview Trailer Courts, so I'm familiar with the area as well. Uh, it's exciting to see, uh. Development like this going to place. I know it's gonna take a lot of effort, but I think it'll be a very nice community if approved by the commission and the city council.
Mrs. Commissioner Lerman. I'm too pretty excited about this opportunity for the city of Pasco, especially East Pasco. I feel like. This, um, is a perfect combination of the the values that the planning commission have of. Creating a city that people wanna live, work, and play. Um, I think all three of those factors, um, those values are represented in this.
Shall we proceed with, uh, with the vote staff or? Okay. Uh, so Commissioners, um, the chair will entertain a motion.
This chair, or this is, uh, Commissioner Lerman.
Yes, Commissioner.
I move that the planning commission concur with the findings of the approval criteria and additional factors for consideration for CPA twenty twenty-two. Dash zero zero three, contained in the staff report and recommended to the Pasco City Council and approval of the request.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been, uh, moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed signify saying nay. Let the record show that the, uh, applicant, the proposal passed unanimously. Staff, if you would walk us through the next one. Thank you so much for your attendance and the comments. Appreciate it.
Yes, hello, uh, this item is, uh, comprehensive plan amendment, uh, twenty, uh, twenty-two zero zero four. Uh, the application is for a land use amendment from the low-density residential land use to the medium-density residential land use. Um, it's approximately thirty-two point two five acres. Um, the site is located further up north on Broadmore Boulevard, um, and, uh, west of Broadmore Boulevard, north of Burns Road. Um, there's also, uh, several other comprehensive plan amendments, one, uh, recommended earlier this evening. Um, to the south and another one, uh, later on in tonight's talk it, um, to the south and obviously Broadmore further to the south. Um, the proposal, um, again aligns with, uh, planning policies and comprehensive plan goals about. Increasing the amount of, uh, residential variety, um, and densities within a close proximity to each other. Along with the future, uh, potential commercial development and broad, general Broadmore area. Um, like any other, uh, comprehensive plan amendment, a rezone would require a public hearing with the Pasco Hearing Examiner and of course, uh. Any development to be put on the site, uh, would be required to go through the environmental review process to. Um, identify, um, and, uh, provide the necessary mitigation associated with the impacts of the proposal. Um, generally, staff supports the proposal and, um, uh, happy to answer the questions we can about this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Commissioners, do you have any questions on Mr. Gonzalez before we proceed? None, uh, we'd like to invite the applicant, if attending to the podium, to speak on the post amendment. It does not appear that the applicant is present. We would like to invite anybody. Attend this tonight to, um, speak for or against the application. Going once, going twice, going three times, public hearing, this matter is closed. Commissioners, do you have any, any final comments or questions of staff or? Any issues for fin- uh, final discussion? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion on this application.
I move that the planning commission concur with the findings of the approval criteria. And additional factors for consideration for CPA twenty twenty-two dash zero zero four. Contained in the staff report and recommend to the Pasco City Council and approval of the request.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you so much, the. We had a motion and it has been seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed signify saying nay. Let the record show that the application was approved unanimously. Thank you so much. Mr. Gonzalez, will you walk us through the next one, please?
Uh, yes, uh, Commissioners, uh, this is item comprehensive plan amendment twenty twenty-two, sorry, twenty-two zero zero six. Uh, this is a future land use amendment, uh, from an existing commercial land use to the mixed residential, commercial land use. Um, the site is approximately twelve point eight acres and it's located, uh, north of Burns Road between. Uh, the Future Convention Drive extension, um, and Ochoco Lane, uh, so this is, uh, not too far east of, uh, Route sixty-eight. Um, this proposal, um, was part of, uh, for the planning commissioners that were here at the time was part of a, uh. Of the discussions during the development of the urban growth area and, uh, future land use associated with the major comprehensive plan amendment, uh, several years ago. Um, at the time, uh, the, uh, proponent for this site had, uh, interest in. Uh, the site being a residential use. Um, staff, uh, was concerned about the lack of commercial, um, uh, land, uh. Allocated in this particular area of the city, uh, with substantial residential development already, um, existing to the south. Um, and with a significant amount of, uh, residential households planned, um, in the immediate vicinity of the area, including the development of a potential future high school. Along with, um, uh, the general concerns of locating commercial only along the Road Six Eight arterial. Uh, that being said, the proposal is to go, um, is, uh, for a mixed residential and commercial land use, so a rezone would still be, uh. Required of the application and, um, uh, that concludes staff's, uh, summary of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Commissioners, do you have any preliminary questions, concerns? If there are none, we'd like to invite the applicant step forward.
Good evening. Once again, Commissioners, Peter Harpster with Octera Engineering, uh, here in Pasco. Address is. Twenty-seven oh five Saint Andrews Loop, Suite C. Um, first item that I wanted to address was at the very top of the application. Uh, Mr. Gonzalez added this to the paper that the, uh, parcel number is no longer valid and that is correct. In, uh, March, we submitted this application and. Since then, we've completed a lot segregation, um, so now it encompasses three different parcels. And so we'll, uh, we'll get that, those parcels updated sent to staff this week. Um, so tonight, we would ask the Commissioners to make a recommendation of approval, option one, um, based on the fact that our. Uh, application meets the approval criteria, uh, found in PMC twenty-five two fifteen zero two zero. Um, and, uh, meets the intent of the twenty eighteen twenty thirty-eight comprehensive plan. Um, as stated by Mr. Gonzalez, the approval of this amendment would allow for greater flexibility. Um, which is more closely aligned with the mix of land uses nearby, as you can see on the map. Uh, the staff report stated that within just a one-third mile radius of the site, uh, there's seven different land uses, including commercial. Um, providing a really flexible area and, uh, we're just simply asking for the same land use flexibility that as mentioned benefits, not just the owner, but the end user as well. Um, so with that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them as they come up.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Uh, I'm curious, so you're, um, asking for amendment to convert commercial to mixed residential, commercial. Uh, do you have any idea as to how much commercial? Uh, it's now understanding that. Uh, commercial zoning is is, uh, it's, um, high valued.
Correct, yeah, not at this time, um, still considering different plans, um. This would give us the flexibility to consider all the options, um, that we've been entertaining, so we don't have any. Uh, solid plans right now, but those would certainly be addressed through a subsequent rezone application and, uh, and, uh, those associated public hearings, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we would like to open the, uh. This application for public comment, uh, all those who wish to speak on behalf or against the the amendment, please step forward. Going once, going twice, going three times, public here on this matter is closed. Commissioners, do you have any final thoughts, questions, or concerns on this application?
Only to say that I I think this is, um, in lockstep with what the city of Pasco wants to do and and I think, um. It'll be a much healthier development in this z- in this zoning than than this prior zoning, so it's, I think it's good.
Thank you, Commissioner. If there's no other. Final discussion on this matter, the chair will entertain a motion, please.
Commissioner Moffitt, uh, I move that the planning commission concur with the findings of the approval criteria, the additional factors for consideration. For CPA twenty twenty-two dash zero zero six, contained in the staff report and recommend that the Pasco City Council. And approval of the request.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Let the record show that, uh, that the application was was unanimously approved. Thank you so much. Mr. Gonzalez, will you please walk us through the next one?
Yeah, and we're about a third of the way through in case you're keeping track. Um, this is for application CPA. Uh, two zero two two zero zero seven, uh, this is a future land use amendment, uh, for a, uh, from. Land use amendment to go from the existing commercial land use to the mixed residential and commercial land use. Um, the site is about two and a half acres. It is located, uh, between Burden Boulevard and Wrigley Drive, uh, kind of right in the middle of Clemente Lane and Convention Drive. Um, originally, this application, when, uh, the application came through was for a strictly commercial use, but the applicant has, um, early on the process, again, wanted to revise her. Proposal to be, um, a a future mixed residential, commercial land use similar to many others this evening. Um, similar to those results, um, staff, um, identifies that the mixed residential, commercial land use offers, uh, a variety of flexibility to the property owner, the developer, and the end user. Um, generally, uh, providing a mix of uses, uh, particularly within a built-out area, uh, offers quite a bit of flexibility. Um, and is, uh, generally aligned with comprehensive plan policies and goals on the land use side. Uh, to increase a variety of uses within close proximity to one another. Uh, again, similar to others, uh, this, uh, will require a rezone. A rezone would require, um, a public hearing. Uh, with the Pasco Hearing Examiner, um, and it it's worth noting that within this area. Uh, due to other pending applications, um, not too far from here, that, um, when an eventual project is proposed at the permit level, the environmental, uh. Review will kick in, um, and identify any potential mitigations in particular, uh, to traffic, uh, related to the site, so. Um, uh, there's a long, uh, again with others, a long, uh, process, uh, following, uh, an approval tonight, but staff generally concurs with the intent. Of the proposal and its alignment with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Commissioners, do you have any preliminary questions, concerns on this matter? If not, we would like to invite the, uh, the applicant step forward, if in attendance. Does not appear that the applicant is in attendance. We will move on to public hearing. If there's anybody in attendance that would like to speak on behalf or against the application, please step forward. Going once, going twice, going three times. Public here on this matter is closed. Commissioners, do you have any, any final questions, concerns for discussion?
Um, I'm, Commissioner Henry, I'm I'm very familiar with this site, um, and, um. I think it's a perfect, uh, fit for this parcel of land, right in between heavy commercial and 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 residential areas and. I think it would lend itself, um, to, um, a healthy, um, mix of residential and commercial.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, at this, at this time, the chair will, uh, will, um. Like, uh, we like to receive a motion on this matter, please.
Mrs. Commissioner Lerman.
Yes, Commissioner.
I move that the planning commission concur with the findings of the approval criteria and additional factors for consideration for CPA. Twenty twenty-two dash zero zero seven, contained in the staff report and recommend to the Pasco City Council, approval of the request.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Let the record show that the, uh, the motion passed unanimously. Thank you so much. Mr. Gonzalez, will you please walk us through the next one?
Yes, the next item, uh, concerns, uh, comprehensive plan amendment, uh, two zero two two dash zero zero eight. This is a proposal, uh, to amend the land use from the existing commercial, uh, to a mixed residential and commercial. Um, the site is just near five acres, about four point six acres. It is located on Chapel Hill Boulevard, uh, just west of Saint John Drive and this is east of, uh. Road one hundred, uh, south of Interstate one eighty-two. Again, similar to other applications, the mixed residential, commercial land use offers a variety of flexibility, uh, for most of the city's residential zoning districts. That's R one, R two, R three, and R four, and also, um, the C one commercial zoning district are all permitted uses, uh, in the, uh. Mixed residential, commercial land use, along with, um, higher threshold for densities, um, which could be helpful for the, um, the end residential project due to the site configuration. Um, generally, staff, uh, uh, agrees and supports the proposal. It, uh, aligns with comprehensive plan goals and policies regarding, um. Uh, providing a variety of land uses and development opportunities, uh, to meet the demand of the local and regional market. Um, and staff, uh, would entertain a planning commission discussion on this item. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, do you have any preliminary questions or concerns on this application? If not, uh, the commission would like to, uh, request the applicant to step forward and speak.
Good evening again, Commissioners. Uh, for the record, Rick Simon of RPS Planning Consulting, uh, West Richland, speaking on behalf of, uh. Broadmore RV Leasing and Travis Blake, who are the owners of this property and, uh, are requesting this, uh, uh. Flexibility that's allotted under the residential, commercial land use designation, uh, noting simply that, uh. Uh, the location along Chapel Hill Boulevard is, uh, uh, provides good and easy access to the, uh. Uh, city's arterial street system, uh, capable of supporting both commercial and residential development. Uh, it is a fully, uh, developed, uh, neighborhood surrounding the site, uh, including the Silver Creek Apartments that are immediately adjacent and west of the site. So, uh, high-density residential would would fit in, uh, this location well. Uh, further, it's in, uh, close proximity to several schools and, uh, as well as Liberty Park. And so, uh, would like to, uh, uh, respectfully request, uh, the commission's, uh, approval. Of, uh, staff option one. of staff option one and forward a recommendation of approval to the Pasco City Council. Be happy to answer any questions, should you have any for me at this time, thank you.
Thank you so much, commissioners. Do you have, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to open the, this matter for public hearing. Anybody else in attendance today that would like to speak on behalf or against the application, please step forward. Going once, going twice, going three times. Public hearing on this application is closed. Commissioners, do you have any final discussions, concerns, questions on this matter? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion on this application.
Commissioner Moffett here. I move that the planning commission concur with the findings of the approval criteria and additional factors for consideration for CPA 2022-008, contained in the staff report and recommend to the city council an approval of the request.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Let the record show that the application was approved unanimously. Thank you so much. Mr. Gonzalez, will you walk us through the next one, please?
Yep, good evening. This is for comprehensive plan amendment item 2022-009. This is a proposal that would amend the land use from the existing low-density residential to a proposed mixed residential and commercial land use. The site is just under 20 acres. It is located on Broadmoor Boulevard, just north of Burns Road, west of Broadmoor. It's actually within the immediate vicinity of several other amendments that the planning commission has discussed and will discuss this evening. The mixed residential, commercial land use offers a wide variety of flexibility for residential and commercial uses. And in particular, and this should have been mentioned for the other proposals as well, that this site, along with those others in the immediate vicinity, will benefit in the future when the application comes in for development, assuming a recommendation of approval this evening from the environmental impact statement work that's been done by the Broadmoor Master Plan, particularly with regards to transportation, because we will reference that EIS not only for the Broadmoor Plan, which we'll talk about in just a moment, but also reference projects within immediate vicinity. So when this project is approved and receives a rezon to the site, a rezon to a zoning classification that meets the intent of the property owner and then developer, the application, which would include an environmental review, would, will go through a traffic analysis, make concurrence with available information, such as the results of the Broadmoor traffic information. So general staff supports the proposal, provides more flexibility in the land use options available for folks in a rapidly growing part of the city, and would open up for a discussion with the planning commission, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Commissioners, do you have any preliminary questions, concerns of staff on this matter? Hearing none, the commission would like to invite the applicant, if in attendance, to steep, step forward and speak. It does not appear that the applicant is in attendance. At this point, we would like to open it for public hearing. If there's anybody who would like to speak on behalf or against the application, please step forward. Going once, going twice, going three times. Public hearing on this matter is closed. Commissioners, do you have any final questions, concerns on this application? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion.
This is Commissioner Lerman.
Yes, Commissioner.
I move that the planning commission concur with the findings of the approval criteria and additional factors for consideration for CPA 2022-009, contained in the staff report and recommend to the Pasco City Council an approval of the request.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, signify, say nay. Let the record show that the application passed unanimously. Thank you so much. Mr. Gonzalez, will you please walk us through the next one?
Good evening, planning commission. This is for comprehensive plan amendment item CPA 2022-010. This is a proposed future land use amendment from the existing commercial land use to a high-density residential land use. The site is approximately eight and a half acres. It is located north of West Court Street, in between US 395 and, I believe, 26th Avenue. So this is located right, right abutting the interstate, I'm sorry, Highway 395 and, and some of the existing residential development, commercial development to the south and east of the site. Staff is supportive of this proposal. The site has remained vacant for several years, if not decades, it's undeveloped. There is existing commercial services in part, that would serve, in particular, help to a residential use of a higher density with access and proximity to the highway, public transportation network, and generally feel that this proposal meets the infill goals that the city as a comprehensive plan calls for. So that concludes staff's report and summary of this presentation, and, and happy to answer any questions on this proposal, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Gonzalez regarding this application? I have got a question, Mr. Gonzalez. So high-density, we're talking about apartments, high-density.
It could, could be. The high-density land use has a threshold of a minimum of 21 units an acre, however, and this is written in all the summaries of the staff reports for each item this evening, is that the end density and the number of units is, is going to be determined by the lot size, the lot configuration, access requirements, the dedication of right-of-way environmental factors, height limit, lot coverage. And so there's a, while there's a minimum, there's still a height limit, lot coverage maximums, et cetera, that are associated with the development review. So typically, if not always, the intended density across the entire residential land use spectrum that the city has, the end result is, yields a much lower density. We are, and that was something that we shared with the commission during the House Pull 1923 efforts, if you recall those discussions, is that the end density we end up with is usually significantly lower than what we had called for in the comprehensive plan, just due to the standards associated with development.
Parking also has a big effect on how many units you can put in there.
Correct, absolutely.
And, and Mr. Gonzalez, quick question. I see this finger, this, this panhandle running down, what, what, what is that exactly?
It looks like perhaps the right-of-way was not dedicated at the time of development, which at the time of new development would be required. Kind of a remnant, perhaps.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. At this time, we would like to invite the applicant to step forward.
Good evening, commissioners. Stephen Baumann again, my business is B4 Development and Consulting here in Pasco, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Rudd McClory. Don't have a lot to say. We agree with the staff's finding of facts and believe that with the, as mentioned earlier in the evening, the high need for additional residential housing. We believe this particular property provides and adheres to the council's goals as being an infill development, and believe there's a lot of opportunity here, and would encourage you to vote yes for this proposal, thank you.
Thank you. I do have a, a question. Being next to the, to the freeway, I imagine there'd be some noise issues, concerns that would have to be addressed to some kind of mitigation strategy.
Yes, that's possible, and, and that would go through in the, the hearings examiner process. Those things would be addressed. We've done some proposed layouts on this, but don't have anything necessarily tied down as far as exactly what this would look like. Need to go through this process first, and then we would begin that process with submittal and going through the, the conditions, as Mr. Gonzalez pointed out. It's a, a lot of, as we are working in the area of trying to provide additional densities, it's providing additional challenges with trying to put more in a smaller space. So yes, that is certainly one of the considerations that we would have to address.
Thank you, appreciate that. We would like to open up this application for public hearing. Anybody in attendance today that would like to speak on behalf or against the application, please step forward. Going once, going twice, going three times. Public hearing on this application is closed. Commissioners, do you have any final questions, concerns on this application? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion.
I move, Commissioner Handler, I move that the planning commission concur with the findings of the approval criteria and additional factors for consideration for CPA 2022-010, contained in the staff report and recommend to the Pasco City Council an approval of the request.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Let the record show that the motion was, was moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, signify, say nay. Let the record show that the application passed unanimously. Thank you so much. Mr. Gonzalez?
Good evening. This is for comprehensive plan amendment item CPA 2022-011. This is a future land use amendment, calling for a commercial to a mixed residential and commercial land use. The total site is roughly 6.68 acres. It is located northwest of West Court Street and Road 68. As you can see on the map today, it actually already has a mixed residential and commercial component in terms of the underlying land use. This almost would, would be deemed a map correction, but this was applied privately by the property owner. Again, the mixed residential, commercial land use provides for the most flexibility offered in the Pasco municipal code land use and would allow a development to occur at either 100% commercial, 100% residential, or some variation of the both. As you can see on the map today, technically that would already be permitted. Staff supports the proposal, generally is in alignment with comprehensive plan goals and policies regarding the land use element and the housing element and economic development, et cetera. And staff would entertain a discussion from the planning commission, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Just curious why the, the application, if it's already sewn, hopefully is.
Technically, if they wanted to do something residential on the southern portion of the site, they would have to have the C1 zone. The C1 zone technically only allows residential if it is a secondary use to the primary use on the first floor. So in the C1 zone, only the sort of traditional mixed-use project would be allowed. That can be rather onerous for some projects, especially if that's not their intent. So this would allow a variety of uses that they could maybe do today, but this is a much cleaner version of doing that.
Thank you so much. If there's no other preliminary questions, the commission would like to invite the applicant to step forward, if in attendance. It does not appear that the applicant is in attendance, the commission would like to open up for public hearing. Anybody that would like to speak on behalf or against the application, please step forward. Going once, going twice, going three times. Public hearing on this matter is closed. Commissioners, do you have any final concerns, questions on this application? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion on this application.
Commissioner Moffett here. I move that the planning commission concur with the findings of the approval criteria and additional factors for consideration for CPA 2022-011, contained in the staff report and recommend to the Pasco City Council an approval of the request.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify, say nay. Let the record show the application was approved unanimously. Mr. Gonzalez, will you walk us through the next one, please?
Yeah, these are the fun ones. These are the city-initiated applications. As we had spoke about previously in planning commission meetings, city-initiated applications are automatically placed on the docket, but still require an evaluation and decision from the planning commission and council. So this proposal, CPA 2022-013, is for your future land use and text amendment, which would establish a downtown land use. This covers roughly 150 or so acres. It encompasses the central business district, our core main street in downtown area, along with an area that was delineated through a significant amount of public outreach and input during the recently adopted downtown Pasco master plan. And so the intent of the plan, of this establishment of a land use is to amend the comprehensive plan and integrate recommendations from the downtown plan. This proposal aligns with the land use policy 5B, which is to encourage higher residential densities within adjacent to major travel corridors in the central business district. It also aligns with economic development policy 4C, which is to pursue the ongoing revitalization of the downtown Pasco area, incentivizing development in our central business, central business district area and following the Main Street four-point approach. In particular, what this would do is it would expand our existing central business district overlay zone, and it would be applicable to the area that's highlighted, as you can see on the screen today. And with that, staff is proposing, as a result of the downtown plan recommendations, would be to keep the exemption for off-street parking that would help existing businesses with redevelopment opportunities or new businesses with new development opportunities. It would certainly be a benefit to residential projects, allowing them closer within the proximity to the downtown area. And a part of that would also include a proposal, again, as recommended from the downtown plan, to, to have a removal of the residential maximum, density maximum for the central business district overlay. And I'd like to caveat that by saying, while we may remove the density maximum, your overall number of units are still limited by your height, your lot coverage, your lot size, site configurations, and financial feasibility, et cetera. And, and again, staff would support the proposal. It's in alignment with the downtown Pasco master plan, and as this commission is aware of, went through a significant amount of public outreach and input, and this is one step of many to implement that plan immediately. Staff did receive a letter of support from the Downtown Pasco Development Authority, that's in your agenda packet, and is happy to answer any questions we can about the proposal, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Commissioners, do you have any preliminary questions on this matter?
So as I look at this, this overlay, thank you for that overlay, by the way, because that's not in my packet, but that really answers a question of mine. So it looks like you have a piece of it that's a park. Correct me if I'm wrong, up in like kind of the northwest section, or north, sorry, northeast section, correct? So what, if, if this is adopted, what will that do to do a park area? Because as, as I noticed in this massive packet that we got today, thank you very much for that, the continued thing that's brought up are two things, parks and traffic. And so I don't think really we need, personally, I don't need to hear about traffic, but the park is, is definitely going to be an issue, I think, unless you can clear that up for us.
Yeah, and so when the public notices went out for all of these, immediate question is, is we get from the public is what are you doing to my property? And the answer is, we're doing nothing. Particularly with this site, is that all this is doing is establishing a new boundary that the city can then use to that the city can then use to implement the goals and the strategies from the downtown master plan, including uh, a revised zoning code update that would apply to this boundary, that, that will be something that this planning commission is a big part of throughout twenty twenty-three and maybe twenty twenty-four. Um, but with regards to volunteer park and the other parks that are within this site, including Peanuts Park and the Farmers Market Plaza, no- nothing would happen to, to those specific sites at all. Um, those are city-owned facilities, so the city will continue to maintain them, uh, but we view that the, uh, flexibility, um, and the encouragement of new residential and, and business opportunities would make those parks, um, uh, but would increase access to those facilities, increase access to the general downtown area and thus hitting several comprehensive plan goals and policies that have been in place for, for several iterations now.
Thank you.
Quick, quick question, Mr. Ma- Gonzalez. I, I didn't follow all the parking reduction. You, you, you're going to reduce some of the parking requirements?
Uh, so the central business district overlay, which is a overlay district that is already in the municipal code exempts parking for the central business district, which generally is the, uh, common wall area, um, in, including, uh, the areas north and south of the Farmers Market, Peanuts Park Plaza. Uh, one of the, uh, recommendations, uh, one of many recommendations in that town Masco plant, downtown Pasco master plan was increasing parking flexibility. Um, we recently, um, participated in some legislative activities regarding parking and, and the encouragement of residential units. And when we ran the numbers, if the retail, so looking just at the retail businesses in the central business district, if they had to follow today's parking requirements, it would equate to roughly twenty-one hundred and sixty off-street parking spots, off-street meaning inside of your property line, which is roughly nine acres, which is roughly twenty-three to twenty-eight percent of the area itself. So roughly a quarter of the downtown area would be covered with off-street parking requirements. Thus, the question is where would you go to if all there was, the go-to was a parking lot? Um, so we believe that this is a, uh, uh, well-aligned with the intent of council goals and policies about encouraging development in the downtown and the surrounding neighborhoods. And certainly, uh, a recent, um, recommendation from all the work associated with the downtown master plan. In particular, the parking would certainly help businesses, but with regards to one-bedroom, studio bedroom, multifamily units, I think that's where we're going to see the most benefit in the future.
Great, thank you. That, that sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. That was, uh, very, very helpful. Um, at this, at this time, I would like to, um, open up this application for public hearing. Anybody that would like to speak on behalf or against the city propose new downtown land designation, please step forward.
Good evening, Council. Stephen Baumann again, resident of Pasco. Um, I'm here as a board member of the Lord's Medical Center. And the question that we had and, uh, our staff has asked us is, is would this impact the operation of the hospital or future expansion of facilities in any way?
N- no, um, uses like a civic facility or medical facility would likely require a special, a special permit, um, anyways. Um, and so this proposal would not change any of the existing properties other than the land use. Um, and what would happen is all of these existing zoning districts would be, um, under the umbrella of the land use. And then over the next year or so, staff will work with our planning commission, our downtown development authority, and members of the public and the downtown community to identify and refine those potential zoning standards, um, all in the intent to, uh, encourage development and make redevelopment opportunities more feasible.
So by and large, as a, as a public facility, it really wouldn't adjust it in a marked way. No, thank you so much.
Uh, thank you for the question and, uh, the feedback. Uh, there's anybody else that would like to speak? Going once, going twice, going three times. Public hearing on this application is closed. Commissioners, do you have any final questions, concerns on this application? Hearing none, the, uh, the chair will entertain a motion.
Uh, Commissioner Torres, I move that the planning commission concur with the findings of the approval criteria and additional factors for consideration for CPA two zero two two dash zero one three contained in the staff report and recommend to the Pasco City Council an approval of the request.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed signify saying nay. Let the record show that the application passed unanimously. Thank you so much. Mr. Gonzalez, will you walk us through the next one, please?
I think we'll give Mr. Gonzalez a, a break, Mr. Chairman.
Well deserved.
We'll, um, continue with the Broadmoor master plan item. Um, this has been before the planning commission many times now. Uh, it actually started, I was going to say two thousand and eight, I think it started actually in two thousand and six. Uh, but this recent planning effort, uh, began again in earnest in twenty sixteen, uh, with, uh, Hanson Architects. Uh, there was a hiatus in that effort and it was picked up again, uh, just, uh, well, about two years ago. Um, so what we have i- in the Broadmoor area is roughly twelve hundred acres of undeveloped property, period. It's a clean slate. It's located in the geographic center of the tri-cities. It has interstate access. It has high visibility. It has everything that you'll never find in an urban setting, uh, that's of roughly three hundred thousand people. Um, so, uh, the city has taken great care and, um, done much in the way of advanced planning to try to come to, uh, achieving the vision of the Broadmoor area, which has always been, uh, a, uh, which has always been to, uh, present something Pasco doesn't have a lot of, and that is a non-traditional, um, approach to residential, commercial, public use, uh, open space, walkways, um, the ability to walk to a commercial or, or public use of land as opposed to driving, which is, uh, very important when you consider the impacts of the roughly seven thousand units that we expect in this area, seven thousand dwelling units to have on the highway interstate system and the, uh, on, on and off ramps associated with, uh, Road one hundred. Uh, the commission heard a presentation on tax increment financing, uh, a couple of months ago, maybe in November, I think it was. Um, so between the, uh, assessed value that, um, the area has now and the assessed value that it's expected to have over twenty years, that increase in, uh, taxes will pay for roughly thirty-eight million dollars or so of transportation improvements to the off-ramp system, to Broadmoor Boulevard, to an extension of Sanford Parkway all the way west of Broadmoor Boulevard, to, uh, extension of Buckingham, uh, from, uh, Broadmoor West. And then some improvements, as Mr. Gonzalez mentioned before, to the, uh, Burns Road and Broadmoor intersection. Um, let's see, we, uh, co- uh, prepared a, well, our consulting team prepared a draft environmental impact statement uh, that addressed, um, many, many of the issues that are noted that I will go over in the staff report. And then, uh, there's been a ton of work on utilities. So in addition to the roadwork that's coming, uh, in mid, roughly mid twenty twenty-three this year now, uh, the city has formed a local improvement district and is installing trunk sewer lines. And, uh, eventually will be installing trunk water lines through particularly the east half of the Broadmoor area. Uh, so given the fact that it's been master planned, uh, it's been through an environmental impact state process. Uh, the commission has been briefed, uh, many times on the intent and, uh, where we're going with the Broadmoor area. Staff recommendation is to, um, recommend to city council approval of the Broadmoor master plan and that'll be incorporated into our comprehensive land use plan.
Thank you so much. Uh, I gotta say, it's exciting to see a project of this magnitude, um, come to fruition. Commissioners, do you have any additional preliminary questions of staff? Hearing none, would like to open it up.
I just have a quick question.
Yes, Commissioner.
Regarding, regarding the map that we had up on the screen and then, uh, the map we have in our packet, what is the difference, say for instance, um, in the green open space on that map and then not really showing up on ours?
Yeah, I, I, my apologies if I could step in here. So the map that you see on the screen is existing comprehensive plan land uses, which, um, uh, are different than the map that you see in your packet. The map that is in your packet is the map that has been in, um, several of the previous planning, uh, commission, uh, meetings and is also the map that the city, um, is recommending as a preferred alternative associated with the EIS. So if you have the packet in front of you, my apologies, that would be, um, on page forty-seven, that, the map to refer to. Also on that map, you will see a revised, um, industrial allocation to a roughly twelve to thirteen acre parcel that you may recall from the prior two meetings that would help accommodate the existing industrial use, um, through the year twenty thirty-five, um, as a response to comments from an existing, um, business and property owner. Also included in the staff report are, um, the responses to the, um, sixty-five or so, uh, comments received on both the Broadmoor master plan and the associated draft environmental impact statement. Um, there is a comment matrix that was attached to the staff report, uh, for you this evening and also the draft document, um, which has the track changes version of where you would expect to see those changes within the, the document itself. Um, regarding the draft environmental impact statement, as we shared, um, over the past, uh, several months, that, uh, the EIS um, has recommended well over one hundred specific mitigations. Um, and while that sounds, um, overwhelming, and it is, um, I think to reiterate what Director White mentioned is that the development and the moving forward of the track increment finance area is, is a significant move towards getting, I mean, what is kind of odd ahead of the growth in terms of infrastructure, planning with transportation utilities. Um, the revised, uh, draft in front of you this evening also, uh, provides more specific detail um, with regards to the parks and recreation component, that is, uh, transportation and open space and parks, as Commissioner Moffett mentioned, is always one of the things we hear about the most. Um, and we had that planned in, in the Broadmoor document, but, um, after the comment period, it was obvious that there needed to be more, uh, they need to be emphasized more clearly. Um, so we took that back, um, to the drawing board, so to speak, and included what that, um, would look like, including referencing adopted plans such as the twenty fourteen River Shore Linkages Plan, which, uh, was adopted by, uh, council several years ago, but offered a, a wealth of, of recommendations that we think, uh, fit, uh, the Broadmoor planning area. So, um, to answer the original question, the map in your packet is a correct one, not, not the map on the screen, is the current land use with the parcel delineations on top of them.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. Thank you for the response, Mr. Gonzalez. That was very helpful. Uh, the city being the applicant, um, we will, um, move on to open up for public hearing. If there's anybody in attendance today that would like to speak on behalf or against the application, please step forward. Thank you.
It's me again, Stephen Baumann. I just wanted to say that, uh, we all owe the staff an extraordinary, uh, thank you for the effort they've put in here. Um, I was involved in this at various pieces of various parts along the way, and there has been an extraordinary amount of effort that went into this. And there may be need to be down the road, you know, a tweak here and there, but, uh, as Mr. White pointed out, to take a, a piece of land of this, of this size right in the heart of, of our metropolis of three hundred thousand people is extraordinary. And we owe them a big thank you for leading that effort. And, uh, both Mr. White and Mr. Gonzalez have, uh, put a, a countless number of hours into this and, uh, thank you.
Thank you for the feedback. Appreciate it. Uh, we, the commission fully concurs. Um, staff has done an extraordinary job with this development and they should be recognized. Anybody else that would like to speak on behalf or against, uh, this application, please step forward. Going once, going twice.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair for interrupting. Uh, Ms. Tellison, I believe, is, um, on the, uh, either phone or, uh, internet to, uh, to offer testimony.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. And Commission, thank you again for accommodating my repot- remote attendance. It is very much appreciated. And also reiterating the, the applaud to staff for the effort you've put into this. We do appreciate, um, the efforts that you have made in addressing our comments. And I haven't had a chance to review your staff report with the, um, changes that staff has made to the master plan and development regulations, but we do trust that those incorporate our specific, um, notes regarding the change to include the, um, Central Premix American Rock Product Site as an industrial site. And so we do appreciate that very much and we do support, um, the proposal with those changes. And, uh, thank you for your efforts this evening. And if you have any questions for us, we'll, um, happy to answer them or we'll be seeing you shortly as we proceed with our permitting process. Thank you.
My apologies and thank you for, for the, for the comments and the feedback. Uh, your input is, is very valuable. Again, there's nobody else, um, that would like to speak on behalf or against. We're ready to close the public hearing on this application. Going once, going twice, going three times. Public hearing on this matter is closed. Commissioners, do you have any final discussion, questions, concerns on this application?
Real, real quickly, I, I don't mean to rain on the parade here. I'm, I'm supporting everything everybody wants to do, but I, I, I don't quite understand how these roads got laid out and stuff, and perhaps somebody can tell me, but, um, it, it seems a little too fundamental, fundamentally simple to me and, and I would love to see the background behind the, uh, planning here. So, uh, I'm, I'm not gonna, um, I'm gonna support everything that's going on here, but, but, uh, as a master plan, I'm, I'm a little concerned. That's it.
Well, and just very, uh, briefly, Commissioner Handler, um, the master plan will lay out the main arterial corridors a- as an extension of future, or existing arterial corridors, uh, to the best that we can, at least, given the topography. No, those are not. Um, and I, I cannot recall, does the commission have the entire?
Yeah, the, the road layout would be in the, um, the attachment you received, uh, with the draft Broadmoor master plan, which also includes all the technical work associated with the, the land use assumptions and the traffic analysis used to delineate the road network itself. So, yeah, what you're seeing here is just a property ownership line map. I mean, I apologize for that, but, but generally with the.
Oh, I didn't understand. I'm sorry. Okay.
The, the master plan does lay out, uh, the major, uh, well, all the arterials, um, the collector, neighborhood collectors and the development standards underneath, um, uh, the Broadmoor master plan district also, um, identify, um, where blocks are, where streets are intended to go, including access management standards, um, uh, to ensure the, um, uh, that the facility can operate as it was expected to based on the forecast.
Uh, sounds good. Um, I'll wait, I'll wait for more information. Uh, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any other questions for staff? Any final thoughts? If not, I will, uh, the chair will entertain a motion.
Commissioner Moffett, uh, I move that the planning commission concur with the findings of the approval criteria and the additional factors for consideration for CPA twenty twenty-two dash zero one four contained in the staff report and recommend to the city of Pasco Council an approval of the request.
Do I have a second?
Commissioner Lerman seconded.
Thank you so much. The motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, saying nay. Let the record show that the application was approved unanimously. Thank you so much. Staff, please walk us through the next one.
Uh, good evening, members of the.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Just a few more. This is CPA two zero two-two dash zero one five. This one and the next three, I believe, are what are classified as map corrections. And a map correction is is where the underlying zoning district or the land use do not conform to what the actual use is. And in this case, there's a proposal for roughly eight and a half acres. I think this is like actually larger than that. This is located on East A Street, right off of Heritage Boulevard. You can actually see that the parcels here that outline where existing single family detached residential dwellings currently exist. However, they have a land use allocation of commercial, thus technically making their existing use nonconforming, and these are new developments. So this is just a map correction that would provide, that would apply a mixed residential, commercial land use sort of as a blend of the two. The residential dwellings are allowed to continue and and still keep that commercial aspect if necessary in the future. This generally aligns with the implementation component of the master plan, ensuring that there is consistency between the various zoning and land use allocations. And this would likely prevent an issue in the future from a homeowner wanting to do something with their property, like expand it, and then planning staff realizing that the land use doesn't actually allow it. This would do the opposite and allow it. So staff would support their recommendation on this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. I I do have a question on the handouts that we have. It shows total area acreage, six point six eight. That one shows eight point three. Do we have the wrong?
Yeah, the the eight point one three incorporates the parcel that is directly to the east of the site. Early on in the process, the property owner had asked, since we were already city staff initiating this effort, we let the property owner, they received the Lotus in the mail and asked if they could be a part of the recommendation. We believe that makes total sense and have included that. So it it should be a part of the eight point one three total acre site.
Thank you. Does anybody have any other preliminary questions? If not, we're going to, the commission is gonna open this proposal amendment for public hearing. If anybody in attendance today would like to speak on behalf or against this amendment, please step forward.
This is my last time, I promise, Stephen Baumann. So I represent Ralph Brochi on this property, Brochi Orchards LLC, and concur with the staff's findings and have worked with them and asked that this parcel here be incorporated into the to this amendment. And the intention would be to do a virtually identical to the property beside it, another cul-de-sac style, that would be the hope and intention, and so support this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else, please step forward, like to speak on behalf or against this amendment? Going once, going twice, going three times, public hearing this amendment is closed. Commissioners, do you have any any final questions, concerns on this amendment? Hearing none, the the chair will entertain a motion.
All motion. I move the Planning Commission concur with the finding of that of the approval criteria and additional factors for consideration for CPA two zero two-two dash zero one five contained in the staff report and recommend to the Pasco City Council an approval of the request.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Let the record show that the amendment passed unanimously. Staff, will you please walk us through the next one?
Yes, this is another map correction. It's CPA two zero two-two dash zero one six. This is located on Court Street, West Court Street, between Nineteenth Avenue and North Fourteenth Avenue. The intent is to correct the existing land use, which has designated a commercial land use to predominantly, if not all residential uses, to the mixed residential and commercial land use similar to the one before. Covers roughly nine and a half acres. Similar to the other application, this is a map correction. Staff believe that this is in the right interest of the underneath underlying property owners, residents, and generally fixes a deficiency in the city's comprehensive plan, a future land use map. So staff would support a recommendation on this proposal and happy to answer any questions about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Commissioners, do you have any preliminary questions on this amendment? Hearing none, the the commission would like to open this up for public comment discussion, public hearing. Anybody in attendance today that would like to speak for or against the application for this map correction, please step forward.
Hi, my name is David Valley. I'm over power attorney for Robert who owns Drifted Apartments at eighteen seventeen West Cardinal Street. I don't know, is there, is this a correction? Does it affect me at all?
No, in in fact, all it does is just provide the right land use to the existing use itself.
Okay. Okay, that's all I want to make sure. Sorry, first time. Thank you very much.
And sir, I might also add, and the commission, you've you've run across this before, but these are the kinds of things that trip up property owners when they go to refinance. The lenders will often ask very simple questions about zoning and comprehensive plan designations. And if they're contrary, it it's a problem. And so it's it's good to fix it now.
Okay, that's good to know. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good question, and thank you, Mr. White, for the for the explanation. That's very important stuff. Anybody else in attendance that would like to speak? This is your opportunity. Going once, going twice, going three times, public hearing on this map correction is closed. Commissioners, do you have any final thoughts on this amendment? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion, please.
Commissioner Moffett, I move that the Planning Commission concur with the findings of the approval criteria and additional factors for consideration for CPA two zero two-two dash zero one six contained in the staff report and recommend to the Pasco City Council an approval of the request.
Second. The motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Let the record show that the application amendment passed unanimously. Thank you so much. Staff, will you please walk us through the next one?
Yes, this is for comprehensive plan amendment item CPA two zero two-two dash zero one seven. And just like the previous items, this is a map correction. The proposal here is to take the existing industrial, I'm sorry, commercial land use to the mixed residential and commercial land use. That that's actually an error. There there's actually an underlying industrial zoning district applied. You can't see on this map, but the areas is shaded. It's a commercial land use, and there's existing residential dwellings. So similar to the other proposals I just heard, this is a map correction to provide a mixed residential and commercial land use option and to ensure that there is consistency between the current use and the city's comprehensive plan and zoning. It's a site located on both sides of Tenth Avenue, just north of the Columbia River and Cable Bridge, in between West A Street and West Ainsworth. Like Director White mentioned, we actually have gotten several calls from some other property owners with that exact barrier of trying to refinance or sell their home. And then we got a call at City Hall asking to verify the the land use and zoning. And unfortunately, we have to tell them that the zoning and the land use isn't consistent with what actually is on the ground. So this is an attempt to make that correction, to avoid that in the future. So staff supports this proposal and would appreciate discussion from the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gonzalez. I guess it never dawned on me the importance of these map corrections when it comes to financing and why not. Commissioners, do you have any additional, any questions from Mr. Gonzalez or staff regarding this map correction? If not, the commission will open this amendment for public hearing. Anybody in attendance today would like to speak for or against this application, this amendment, please step forward. Going once, going twice, going three times, public hearing on this matter is closed. Commissioners, do you have any final thoughts on this map correction? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion.
This is Commissioner Torres. I move that the Planning Commission concur with the findings of the approval criteria and additional factors for consideration for CPA two zero two-two dash zero one seven contained in the staff report and recommend to the Pasco City Council an approval of the of the request.
Do we have a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Let the record show that this application for a map correction passed unanimously. Thank you so much. Staff, will you please walk us through the last one, I believe?
That's correct. This is the last one. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. This is item CPA two zero two-two dash zero one eight. This is a future land use text amendment that would apply to the city's future land use map descriptions and densities. So not changing land use, but changing how they are defined, the purpose description, as you see on the table here today. The proposed amendment is consistent with requirements of Growth Management Act to keep your comprehensive plan and development regulations consistent and would address the deficiency in our current comprehensive plan and one that would be inconsistent in the near future with the adoption of several new zoning districts that we now need to incorporate into the land use table and land use map. In particular, particularly with the Broadmoor Master Plan, we would be removing several land uses that are no longer essentially necessary. So those would be removed, and it would clean up our land use table. On the low density residential, to comply with State Growth Management Act and comprehensive plan policies, staff is recommending that we make a modification to the minimum and maximum densities that would go from the existing two to five units per acre to a minimum of three to six units an acre. This helps with the efficiency and coordination with our Public Works Department with the expansion of utilities, in particular sewer. And we would also propose removing some of the references that are included throughout several of the residential zoning districts that call out very specific housing types. Our proposal, since House one nineteen twenty-three recommendations were adopted, and we now allow multiple forms of housing on most residential parcels, would be to simply replace that with a statement that reads a variety of residential development. Of course, that development still has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and the underlying development regulations themselves. We would also like to future-proof the land use classification table by penciling in a pending mixed use zoning district that the Planning Commission recommended for approval just last week. And then also incorporating the pending downtown land use that the Planning Commission just voted on earlier this evening. So this is a little bit of cleanup and some refinement. Again, staff believes that this proposal meets the intent of the comprehensive plan. It addresses deficiencies in our comprehensive plan and would recommend a support of this proposal and would entertain discussion from the Planning Commission on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Commissioners, do you have any preliminary questions about these amendments to the comp plan? Mr. Gonzalez, just remind me, there's some significant changes. For example, the increased minimum density from two to five to three to six. I would imagine there was some opportunity for the public to to comment, provide some input to the comp plan.
Yes, all of these were out for public notices, and so all of them met our notice requirements established in Title twenty-five of the municipal code. I'd also that this was a bring up that this is a recommendation and a policy of the comprehensive plan, which went through its own extensive public outreach process with regards to, so this particular item hits on several elements and goals and policies of the comp plan, land use element to increase variety of residential densities. The public works utilities element by increasing the amount of city that is provided with sewer versus septic symptoms, SIP systems. And also along with helping to facilitate our transportation element by increasing the density where necessary and appropriate based on the availability of a transportation system nearby. So the answer is is yes. This is in alignment with the comprehensive plan and certainly council goals on utility expansions, et cetera.
Thank you so much, Commissioners. Do you have any other, any other questions or comments? If not, we're gonna open up for public hearing. If there's anybody out there that would like to comment for or against this comprehensive plan amendments, this is an opportunity to comment. Going once, going twice, going three times. Public hearing is closed on this amendment. Commissioners, do you have any final thoughts, concerns, issues on this application? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion, please.
Commissioner Moffett, I move that the Planning Commission concur with the findings of the approval criteria and additional factors for consideration for CPA two zero two-two dash zero one eight contained in the staff report and recommend to the Pasco City Council an approval of the request.
Commissioner Handler, second.
Thank you so much. The motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Let the record show that the amendment passed unanimously. Thank you so much. Staff, do you have any final thoughts before we make a final motion?
And Mr. Chair, I just want to thank the commission for the effort tonight and in particular for having two public hearings or two Planning Commission hearings and meetings this this month. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. According to the the handouts, is there a need for a final motion, Mr. White?
Yeah, I I'll be honest, I'm not sure. I think it might be a way to formalize all of the motions made tonight and sort of wrap up all of the decisions made this evening in one final motion that will be delivered to Pasco City Council.
Thank you. Commissioners, one final motion, if you will.
This is Commissioner Lerman.
Yes, Commissioner.
I move that the motions that were approved tonight to move on to the city council to allow them to place it onto their own agenda.
Thank you so much. Do we have a second?
I second.
Let the record show that a final motion was moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed signify by saying aye. Let the record show that the final motion was moved, seconded and approved unanimously. Staff, do you have any final thoughts or comments?
Yes, thank you. This is the reason why the state law only allows it to happen once per year. So we will follow up with public hearing and workshops with the Pasco City Council to finalize the twenty twenty-two dockets as you recommended this evening. And staff has opened the pub, the application cycle for the twenty twenty-three amendments, which will be in front of you late this spring, early summer. So thank you very much. We appreciate your your time this evening. So thank you very much. We appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you for the closing comments. This is my favorite motion. Would like a motion to adjourn, please.
This is Commissioner Lerman. I move to adjourn our meeting for tonight.
Thank you so-
Mr. Crouchfield announced seconded.
Motion to adjourn has been made and seconded. Totally concur. Officially declare this Planning Commission meeting adjourned at approximately nine P M. Thank you so much. Have a good night.